YouTube's up. Summer Board adjusted meeting for June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five will come to order. We asked that you silence all your cellphones. Going to read the public statement. The meeting of the Summer Zoning Board Adjustment for June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Publics Meeting Act has been approved. A copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was published in the Courier-News, posted on the bulletin boards outside Borough Hall, posted to the municipal website, and given to the clerk administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to the judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call. Oh, my.
Chairman Adair is excused. Ed Allot.
Here.
Roberta Carpenetz.
Here.
Morgan McLaughlin is also excused. Rich O'Neal.
Here.
Brian Verdemske is also excused. John Flores.
Here.
Eric Alvarez.
Here.
And Stuart Daniels is also excused.
All right. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to its government, to its citizens, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Ryan, Ryan, did you have anything you need to say?
Minutes from June fourth meeting. Second. All in favor?
All right.
Rich O'Neal.
Yes.
Eric Alvarez.
Yes.
Stuart Daniels and Brian are absent, so they were the only two eligible to vote.
Yes, it's by two. All right, next thing on the agenda is Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero one zero Z. It's the Bell Holdings LLC. Everybody get a chance to read it?
Yes.
There were two versions sent out. Obviously, the second one had reflected certain changes made by, well, by really myself, our special counsel, and the, and Mr. Cole. If there's any questions as to that, please let me know.
Does anybody have any questions? Need a motion to move it? Roll call.
Ed Allot.
Yes.
Roberta Carpenetz.
Yes.
Rich O'Neal.
Yes.
John Flores.
Yes.
Eric Alvarez.
I was not present for this, so I think I have to abstain.
Okay.
All right, that brings up the application.
First time, somebody's laptop is here, and I don't know whether that's.
That's the evening council. You can use it if you need it.
Can I take it with me?
It's a door process.
Good evening. My name is Robert.
Evening, Counselor. I said, good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, sir. My name is Robert Polk. I'm an attorney in White House here this evening on behalf of Nishanti Agi, the applicant. We're here to hopefully place a single-family dwelling on an undersized lot at Two Fairview Avenue, and that's the, our course this evening. So again, not being, having been in Somerville before, why don't I say, Counsel, call your first witness.
Call your first witness. Have a seat.
Mr. Chairman, just want to advise the board that I reviewed the notice provided by the applicant, and it was sufficient as to form and content, and the board can exercise jurisdiction over this application.
Thank you, Cliff.
I just want to know for the record, and I had spoken with you informally about this, Counselor. The board is a little bit of a short board tonight, so I know since you're seeking relief that will require five affirmative votes, that you're on notice of that and that you, you're moving forward. You know, I understand that there may be extenuating circumstances that come into play, but I wanted to let you know upfront.
Thank you very much. I say we'd like to present our case this evening. At the conclusion of the testimony, we may request that the board postpone a vote till more members are available and who would, you know, listen to the tapes or read the transcript before a vote is taken.
Very well.
Very well. Very good. Okay, we would call Mark Zagoda, our architect. We're sort of going to do this backwards. We're going to show you where we'd like to go, and then we'll tell you why we'd like to get there.
Okay. Thank you. You solemnly swear, please raise your right hand what you're doing. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you got it?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, sir.
My name is Mark Zagoda. Last name is Z G O D A.
Very good. Counselor, your witness, sir?
Have you testified before this board?
I have not. I've testified in dozens throughout New Jersey, but not in this one yet.
Okay. Would you briefly give the board your credentials? Is that, we ask that they?
Bachelor of Architecture from Syracuse University in nineteen eighty-eight, been licensed since ninety-two, in good standing with the AIA and NCARB, and I've testified before dozens of boards throughout the state. And I'm currently licensed in seventeen other states if you need anything.
We found him acceptable, Counselor.
Thank you. We would ask that his testimony be regarded as an expert.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay. First thing, I have to be honest, I have developed.
Will you speak into the microphone, sir?
There's a mobile mic right there by the.
Yeah. Yes.
I have to apologize. I'm not a hundred percent. I have something called a corneal ulcer. I cannot see in this eye, but it'll clear in a couple of weeks. And my mother passed away yesterday, and I was at her bedside for days. So I didn't want to postpone it because I know how this goes, so I'm going to power through this, okay? All right.
Condolences to you.
I'm sorry?
Condolences to you.
Okay, thank you, yeah, but it was time. But anyway, I didn't want to have a sob story, but just in case I ramble, you know why? Okay. Obviously, it's a small lot. We're proposing a small house. We have no choice. But we're kind of doing it in the context of character of what the surrounding property is. You guys are familiar with Fairview Ave., which is basically, you know, a hundred-year-old, two-story colonial-type buildings, gable roofs, you know, the A roofs with little porches on them. So we tried to match that style. You know, a lot of them are very narrow, and we understand there was even a house here prior that had burned down many years ago. So we're proposing on the small lot is a small house, but with nice character. We're looking at only eight hundred square feet to the gutters, okay? Because obviously, we can't have the gutters or the overhangs into the setbacks. Since we have so many reliefs we're seeking with the setback requirements, you know, the other experts will testify regarding that. In the big picture, we try to think of, okay, Fairview Ave., we would respect the front and rear setbacks to that, okay? The Main Street, South Gaston Ave., because it's considered a corner lot. There's no way we could address any of those because of the corner. So we cited the project where the front and rear setbacks are compliant. Mr. Stires will discuss that further, but we need the side relief. So it's a small building, but we're looking at, you know, the modern farmhouse look, kind of an off-white, black windows. It's going to be sharp, though. It's, you know, you have that same idea. That's a recessed front porch. We didn't, you know, seek relief to get an extended additional porch like some of the others in the town in that street area. So it's a little recessed porch. It's just, you come in, it's just basically a great room with a kitchen in the rear, a linear stair, and the upstairs is just basically two master bedroom suites. It's a two-bedroom house. I should like it. It's a really efficient little house. And again, the first floor is only seven hundred and forty-one square feet, including the porch, and the second floor is seven hundred and forty-one square feet also. We're compliant with the height. We're only, you know, thirty feet plus or minus, so, you know, we conform in that regard. Again, try to fit with the style of the neighborhood. One thing, since we did cite this three feet from the property line, and if approved, you know, we'll go on to the construction drawings, I will create, you know, one-hour fire-rated construction there, and that's easy to do. I've done it so many times with the dense glass and stuff. Not a problem. We'll conform with that regard. I'm just showing downspouts. At this point, you know, the drainage will be, you know, testified by Mr. Stires. We'll, we'll take care of those issues. The lighting I had not shown, but it's easy to describe. It's just this little recessed porch. We're just going to have one in that soffit, and then two coach lights, you know, on either side of the front door, you know, for the mailbox, and the same thing in the rear, where there's a rear door, just, you know, one alongside here. You know, by code, I have to have a light at the door. Anyway, we're not proposing anything on the Gaston Ave. side. There won't be any floodlights or anything street. So I should actually walk you through. This is the idea of the Fairview side. Now, this is actually the same plane, you know, same wall plane. It's just a little trick with the trim and the six-foot overhang to try to give it, you know, a little more pop like some of the neighborhood is, okay? And the windows, you know, generous amount of glass. This is the side of Gaston Ave., but, you know, the windows line up. The classical idea of the larger on the bottom, smaller on the top, actually goes back to the Renaissance. But it's going to be sharp with the white and black, and even there's going to be a freeze board underneath these gables. So it's going to be a really sleek, you know, modern farmhouse idea. Obviously, the grading was a concern with the neighbors at a high grade, so that's why it's kind of an elevated ground plane. But we're going to do, you know, wood joists. They have a small crawl space, no basement, ventilated for the insulation, a little access in the back, so it has a slightly raised ground plane. It's going to be so easy to build. I mean, it's a twenty-foot span, you know, so basically just out of TGI. So again, the overhangs were important. I didn't want to go in the setbacks. There are only six-foot rakes on the side and in the front to keep everything as I could out of the setbacks. And, you know, the result, we're looking for, you know, a small but tasteful and attractive small house, but appropriate for the site.
HVAC going in the attic?
I'm sorry?
HVAC, is that going in the attic, or are we hiding that in there?
We should swear him in.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll hold that question till you're up.
There's an. Sorry, I was going to say, you're going to, you're going to put this witness on the stand separately?
Yes.
Okay, that would be, that would be better.
Oh, actually, no, I'm sorry. I said a little out of it. There's actually a utility room right here. I designed it on the first floor.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's already, it's already there, that first floor utility behind the stairway. Yeah.
So the attic will be accessed from a hatch?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Just a hatch in the hallway?
Yeah. There's, there's some headroom for storage, but we're not really anticipating mechanicals or anything of that, right? Yeah.
So it's not going to be finished?
Just for Christmas decorations.
So it's not going to be finished? It's just used for storage?
Correct. You know, we'll insulate, you know, God now. R forty-nine, I got to do, so we'll insulate the heck out of the ceiling floor there.
Right.
So the plane that we have right there, we have that one?
Yeah, this, yeah, the good point. Yeah, this is not a new exhibit. It's the one, revision number one, two, six, twenty-five.
And that one right there, Ryan, do we have that one? Is that one of our exhibits?
That's actually, I stole from the planner.
Did you submit this with your?
Yeah, this was submitted prior.
Okay, good. All right, now, I.
And this is.
Though we don't have to mark it in that case.
Correct, yeah, exactly.
But if you had anything that you brought tonight, let me know so we can, so we can admit, we can.
Understood, yeah. Yeah, this is identical what you have.
Good enough. Thank you.
So the windows are double-hung, single-hung windows?
Yeah, double-hung windows.
Internal divides?
Yes.
The light divides are internal?
Yeah, we'll get it, you know, the sleek, people getting more into the Marvin, the really slim look like that. We'll discuss it with, you know, the owner at the point. But, yeah, they're, they're considered double-hung.
What kind of, are you putting vinyl siding up, or?
Yes. Yes.
Then you're going to do dense glass underneath it?
Done.
On the, on the property side, property line?
Yes.
The, the building sits on that property line on the other side. That's a concrete, non-combustible building, so.
Right, that's shed, yeah. But when three, three feet of the property line, do the right thing.
Is that your testimony, sir?
I'm sorry?
You all done?
Yeah. Any questions, or any?
Anybody from the board have any questions to this witness? Anybody in the audience have any questions for this witness? Hearing done. Counselor, next witness.
Our next witness, VR engineer, Mr. Stires.
Good evening, Mr. Stires. Let me please repeat it to me. You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you got it?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Craig Stires, S T I R E S.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I believe you can stipulate to Mr. Stires credentials. He is a.
I don't know. I was here two weeks ago.
No, I know. I, I, you know, I, I know the chairman and you like to banner about it, but I, I think we, I think.
Art's texting me right now. He's like, hey, I'm a hard time.
I would certainly recommend we stipulate this to your credentials, Mr. Stires.
We find you acceptable.
I thought we'd go into executive and talk about it.
Yeah. Well, that's me, Rich.
That said.
Floor is yours, sir.
All right, I'll have, I'll have a seat. As I, the stipulated before, the lot is known as Two Fairview Avenue, or Lot Twenty-four, Block Fifty-One. On the borough tax maps, total tract area is twenty-five hundred square feet, or point oh five seven acres. It's located on the southeast of the corner of the intersection of Fairview Ave. and South Gaston. It's in the R three residential zone, which is, the use is permitted, and primarily surrounded with residential uses, with the exception of Corbo's, which is across the street, and who actually used this for a fair amount of time. If anybody got their car fixed there, that's probably where it was parked for the most part. Up until this point, when Rich came in, we thought this was an orphan lot for fifty years, until Rich said that he put the fire out around nineteen seventy-three and got shellacked with potatoes on his way up the, up the stairs. So I think that is an important aspect that, you know, our planner's probably going to utilize as far as the testimony, that there was a house there at one point. But anyway, you know, kind of like Mark said, the house is going to be, the proposed house can be tastefully sized, you know, the best that we can, trying to respect all the setbacks. It's a nineteen by twenty-nine, two-bedroom house. As far as the grading, again, as Mark said, we have, on the eastly side, we have that block garage, and the, that grade along that property line is slightly higher than our property. So we had to elevate the house to make sure that it drained around, or, you know, front and back, and then around the house to South Gaston. There is an existing driveway at the south end, or driveway apron that we're going to utilize for the proposed driveway. We will have two spaces for two vehicles at the backside of it. I can also run through the, the list of variances. Lot area required is six thousand square feet, or at twenty-five hundred. The lot width is required is fifty, or at twenty-five. The lot depth does comply from Fairview back. Lot frontage is required to be fifty, or at twenty-five. The impervious coverage is required to be forty percent, and we're at fifty-nine point two. The FAR is required to be thirty, we're at sixty-four. The front yard setback, we do comply on Fairview side, but obviously, on South Gaston, we're two feet off the property line. And then the opposite side of South Gaston would be the side yard setback, we're at four, um, three, and it's required to be four. So we almost do meet the requirements there. As far as engineering testimony, it's pretty self-explanatory. You know, we did, I do have a, besides, this is the planner's, and he'll mark this when he comes up, but I have something similar, you know, the, what the planner's going to testify is really the façade along Fairview. But I have an aerial version. Like, maybe mark this as A one?
Yes, I would like you to mark it as A one, and just date it, you know, six eighteen twenty-five.
And is an aerial rendering with today's date. If you guys can see that far, but I've tried to outline the, the property lines on the block itself, as well as the, the block to the north of Fairview. And you can see the proposed dwelling in, up in the corner here. And you can kind of get the character of the, the residences in the immediate area. And, you know, it, it honestly does, despite being a very small lot, it, it does seem to fit in with the neighborhood. You know, there are a little bit bigger lots on the north side, but you can see these, you know, for example, the three lots immediately to the east are very similar in size, and then you have some that were, you know, more spread out. Couple of these are newer. They used to be where the inspection station was. So I think you probably have four new lots in this area. And, you know, also, like Mark said, it's the, the views or the facades are consistent with what's on Fairview. I think Mike brought up about the number of steps to the new house. That is consistent as well. I, I mean, there's a couple newer houses that sit down a little bit lower. They're one and two, but for the most part, they're four to five steps up to the front door. So again, it's kind of limited as far as the engineering is concerned. So if there's any questions.
Greg, I have my, my normal comment. Can you get the roof leaders to the street? I know it's a curb, I know. On one side at least, the idea is to try to eliminate or reduce icing potential.
The one thing, I checked, the, if you look at the spot elevations, curb's only four inches.
Right.
And the sidewalk's probably the same, so I don't know if we're going to get to the, to the curb line. So I, and I mean, the one thing we could potentially do is maybe direct them to the grass strip right before the sidewalk, instead of, you know, directly towards South Gaston, kind of tip them north and south, so they hit the grass as opposed to right across the sidewalk. But I don't think we're going to get to the curb line.
If we, if it doesn't work grade-wise, it doesn't work. I, I get that.
Or just not do downspouts.
Well, that's a question for the board. The question is that if the grade doesn't work, you're going to have runoff across the sidewalks, which is, there's no way around it, being the grades. So what Greg is saying is, well, if you don't have drain gutters, then it's uniform flow as opposed to a point.
Right.
It is another alternative to address that situation.
Well, you know, full gutters on houses are a New Jersey thing. Most of the country, they don't have them. You know, the rain falls off the roof and goes onto the ground. Find a way to go somewhere.
Right.
And we invented that here to make his life complicated.
Right. I mean, Craig is basically saying, you eliminate that, and you don't have a point discharge or four-point discharge, isn't it?
And there's also, there's also no basement, so you don't have to worry about coming back into the basement, so.
It's a good solution if the board's comfortable with that.
Yeah, you disperse the water.
Right.
Yeah. It's almost like a natural sheet, sheet flow, so, which is probably what it's doing now, you know, just coming.
And then, Craig, I had the question on the tree. Are you okay, comfortable with that tree? It's kind of close to, I know the lines are cut down the utility pole on Fairview.
I, I honestly prefer to get, pay the, pay the fee as opposed to put the trees in, because they're going to turn in the boomerangs like everything else on High Street, for example.
I, I support that, just so you know, there's a.
Both sets of wires on our, our side, so they're both on South Gaston and Fairview, the wires on our, our side.
The street tree requirement is two and a half trees, so I rounded down the two, and I think it makes perfect sense in this situation not to put the trees in, given what Craig just said.
We have a longstanding tradition of putting trees under utility wires, you can imagine.
Well, we can ask for a waiver, but I'm sure that the board may say, pay the fee.
I think we prefer that you pay the fee.
I cut to the chase.
Very good. Okay, just a little, I just want to make sure I've got that right.
And I think that the last thing is to preserve the site distance when you come to the intersection, so.
Read.
So I think it's, it's, it's warranted.
The other question I had is, the paving, you're going to pave the driveway where the cars are going to park. It's going to be inconsistent with the, one of your details had two-on-four-on-six, which is a little bit, in my opinion, overkill for a driveway. So if you're going to pave it, it's going to be consistent with the borough ordinance, which is less paving.
Yes.
Less asphalt, is what I'm saying. Yeah. Gotcha.
Yep.
Craig, the strip of land between the house and the next property over, what's, is that going to be soil, or is that going to be a walkway over there?
I get to mark this as A two now.
Yes, A two, please.
You're talking on the east side? Yeah, the intent is to, to have that as grass.
Okay.
And kind of get a little bit of a swell. There's, that's what I saw. The, the high point is like the corner of that old garage. So what we have to do is push the water in both directions, and then it'll come around the house. So this is a small swell right there.
Board, any more questions for engineer?
Yep.
Anybody in the audience have any questions for the engineer? Thank you. Next witness.
This will be our, will be our planner, Mr. Peters. You solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth, so I hope you got it? I do. Please state your name and spell your last name for the record. My name is Carl Peters, Carl with a C, P E T E R S.
Good evening, Mr. Peters. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you again.
I worked with Carl in Princeton for many, many years.
Counselor, run through his credentials real quick.
On recommendation, then.
I'm licensed by the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer, professional land surveyor, professional planner, and a construction official. But tonight, I'm wearing my planner's hat. So I've been licensed as a planner since nineteen ninety-one, as an engineer for many more years before that.
Have you been before us before?
No, I haven't. As, as Mr. Gibbons mentioned, I was the municipal engineer in the borough of Princeton for over twenty years when there was such an animal. And when the two municipalities would emerge, I decided it was a good time to do something different.
Have you testified to any boards locally around here?
I, I've testified in half a dozen counties or so in the state, including, in Somerset County, I guess I testified in Franklin. I've testified in Mercer, Monmouth, Middlesex Union.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Of course, we would ask Mr. Peters' testimony to be regarded as that of an expert.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So of course, this evening when we came in here, we were, we were advised that there was a house on this lot fifty, fifty or so years ago, which kind of answered a question I had. How did this lot stay vacant for so long? Because our records had, our deed records had gone back to the forties and said that there was a lot of this size, twenty-five by a hundred, and, which is, you know, far smaller than, than what the zoning ordinance requires in terms of lot size for a single-family house. So given that we're less than half the area of the zoning requirement, we have problems meeting various bulk requirements, including the setbacks, especially because we have a corner lot, we have two front yards, twenty-five-foot setback. So if we honored that setback on South Gaston Avenue, we couldn't build anything. So I believe that this qualifies for C one variance for those things, because the C one is for hardship due to the exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, or existing topographic conditions on a particular piece of property. So this is a particular piece of property, and we have to work with what we got here. So in looking at this development, and why, you know, what, what could you possibly do in a lot? So the first thing we think of is we want a use that is, a permitted use in a zone. So there are several uses, permitted uses in the zone, but a single-family house is the least intensive use that we could put to, to this property. We think that in doing so, we meet some of the requirements for a C two variance in terms of the public good, because we advanced purposes of planning as they're enumerated in the municipal land use law. We have a modest house here. We provide opportunities for a variety of housing types. As we found out this evening, there was a house there before, so it's consistent with that. The architect has shown you his design of, of the house. We, we believe it's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Being on a quarter lot, even though we're a little bit tight on the one sideline, the other sideline is open in a corner, so it provides adequate light and air for the, the residents of this, this property. And we believe it provides a desirable visual environment in keep, in that it's in keeping with this neighborhood. And we believe it provides a desirable visual environment in keep, in that it's in keeping with this neighborhood. In fact, in looking through the tax records and the, the sizes and ages of the house in these blocks, now. I should, I should mark these correct?
Yes, please. I think this will be A3, correct?
A3.
And just with a date on it. Then I, then I had one question and I don't want to interrupt your, your flow here.
Should that somebody A4 that?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I, I, I just had one question, I, and this is customary in terms since you're, since you may be seeking C1 relief. Is there any property available to the applicant that could be purchased or received via conveyance that might bring the property into conformance with the, with the applicable zoning requirements?
The size of the adjacent lot is such that combining the two lots wouldn't, or you couldn't, the other lot doesn't have enough property to give to make this lot compliant if they were to, to get property from the adjoining.
Okay, so the answer, okay, so that, that's, that's, that's the C1 question. I mean, these two, are these two lots two under, under, both non-conforming lots?
Well, I can, I can show you about the non-conforming lots, because.
I'm not trying to open another can of worms.
This is, actually, Lot 23, the adjoining property, this, this is on A3. I got a lot area diagram where I show the properties within the, the general area of Two Fairview Avenue. And the adjoining lot, Lot 23, is conforming, but just by a little bit.
Very good, no, no, so that's fine, so it isn't a, it isn't a lot merger situation at all.
No, no, and you can see here, the red lots that I show here, these are non-conforming lots in the neighborhood. And the ones that are shaded in green are currently conforming.
Very good. Thank you for answering that.
So one of the things we looked at through the, the tax records were exactly what sizes are the houses that are there in the neighborhood now, when were they built? To find out if what we're proposing does, you know, we think it, we think it meets the neighborhood standards. But we wanted to have some qualitative evidence of that. So based on those records, there are 49 houses in this area that were built before 1930. Those houses, the median area of those houses is 420 square feet. So what the architect testified with the overhangs were at 1,600 square feet, but without them, we're at 1,400, close to 1,500 square feet. So we're slightly larger than the houses that were built before 1930. There are eight houses that were built between 1930 and 1999, they have a median building area of 1,872 square feet. And there are seven houses that were built after 2000, and they have a median building area of 2,492 square feet. So we think our size is compatible, compatible with the, the neighborhood for the past hundred years. It's a two-story, two and a half story home, similar to the other houses. I put this board together showing the facades of all of the buildings around the block of Fairview Avenue. And I think that what you've seen from the architect is consistent with these two and a half story gable roof type houses. So we think it fits the visual environment and the massing of the building is such that's consistent with the neighborhood. In terms of the, the Somerville master plan, talks about the need for modest housing while preserving an established residential neighborhood. We think this application does that. The master plan also encourages creation of owner-occupied housing. We believe this meets the guidelines for infill housing with its compatible massing and height. And it's located somewhat near the central business district, which is one of the goals for promoting activity downtown other than during the business day. And we believe this increases the opportunity for somebody to get a house at a more reasonable price point than there may be elsewhere in this area of New Jersey. Does the board have any questions? Thank you.
Anybody from the audience have any questions of the planner? Counselor.
Okay, the applicant?
My name is Nishant Tiagi.
Would you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
You solemnly swear as a testimony you're about to give in this matter will be the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record, sir.
Nishant Tiagi, last name T-Y-A-G-I.
Thank you. Counselor, your witness, sir.
Nishant, if you had any experience in Somerville in this area?
Yes, I recently finished a house on 62 Mercer Street. It was a house that exploded during Hurricane Id, Ida several years ago. It was a middle house. I finished that project in October of 2024. It was a single, single-family house, larger than this one, but this is just on a smaller scale due to the lot size. And I went through that process. I didn't have to go in front of the board because that, we were able to fit something in the setbacks without requiring a variance. But that was a seven-month project here that I did last year.
Okay, and you heard the planner's question before, would you pay for the trees?
Yes, I was planning on putting new street trees anyway, because I had to do that on Mercer Street. But if, it, I, I do agree, they end up in the, for the power lines, we had to cut one there to replace it, and I'm sure in 10 years, Mr. Hadley from the DPW is going to have to cut that one again, like he, he did over there. So we could, we could pay the fee in lieu of planting the, planting new ones.
Any board member have a question regarding the intended project?
Just a couple. You using gas HVAC or you going heat pumps?
It'll be natural gas, forced air, HVAC. And there was a question about the attic earlier, what, what'll be up there? It won't be finished, there, there will be some duct work, but that'll just be strictly mechanical stuff up there, no storage, it won't be finished. It won't be finished and it'll have a, either a pull-down staircase or a access panel, depending on how Mark draws the final set of plans.
And you got sewer capacity, water capacity?
Yes, I, I actually got a will-serv letter today from Christian Santiago at the Somerset Raritan Sewer Authority. They have capacity, I have to pay a fee. He suggested, don't pay the fee till you get your approval from the board. But they have a capacity for 300 gallons a day for a single-family house.
That was actually very good advice.
One question, I'm just nosy, stick built or prefab?
Stick built.
Okay.
I mean, you end up with a better product, I think, in the stick built.
Just asking.
Okay.
Is that your testimony?
Uh, yes.
Board have any questions of this witness?
I don't.
Does the public have any questions of this witness? Okay, counselor.
No, that, that's our case, ladies and gentlemen. Nice to learn this evening that, you know, there used to be a house there, that answered so many questions for us when we searched the title back to 1945. We're used to, yeah, as to how this orphaned lot became established, but thank you. I, I think from the testimony that you've heard tonight, all the criteria required for variance could be granted in this case without, without question. But I'll have to ask the applicant whether he wishes to, you pay your money and take your chances, whether you would ask for a vote this evening, or whether you'd like to carry it to see if other members would listen to the tapes.
Mike, do you have anything to add to, anything, any stipulations, any?
Uh, we went over the tree, I think Craig said one tree, we're going to eliminate the trees, we eliminate downspouts, driveway is going to be paved, and of course with the borough ordinance. We went over drainage, oh, contamination. Does anybody know there's any contamination, sewer groundwater on the lot?
I, I, I don't think there, I, I don't, it was just cars that were parked there. When I, when I purchased a lot, I went to the, oh. I, I went to the property owner, the auto body repair shop, and I, I asked him if those are his cars. He was, yeah, I'm just parking customers' cars, no one's ever told us to move them, I'll get them out of there by the end of the week. I went back at the end of the week, they were all gone. They all, I noticed they all had license plates on them, they all had current registry, inspection stickers, which was why I was worried about that they're clunkers. But it seems like they all drove off the lot on their own. So it might have been some of his cars, some neighborhood cars that were just parking there, because no one ever said no in the past.
Anything visually apparent to you?
No, the grass is there.
Ed, one, one thing. I just want to, counselor, do you have any objection to making Mr. Compliance with Mr. Cole's June 11, 2025 report a condition of approval?
Is there anything of particular?
I think you're all right.
No, I think, I think I brought the sidewalks in good shape, the apron's in good shape, just a note on the plans, break of construction.
Whatever we, whatever we damage will replace, one or two of the pads will get damaged when we run our underground electric, because we can't do overhead anymore. So that'll be replaced as soon as we pass our backfill inspection.
Further, RSI, I particularly the utilities up the underground, which is in the report. I think Craig addressed all of the other items, so what left is saying is, consistent with the report, or as a, a must amended by testimony, is what we did here.
Yes, we'll stipulate to be.
We're going to residential style lights, so the lights are covered, stormwater management's covered.
Yes.
Repair of the sidewalks is covered, driveway is covered.
Yes.
Setbacks, we discussed contamination, no one has any information of contamination. Rich provided good insight, this lot was not a vacant lot.
Was that 1973 you said?
Something like that, yeah.
My goodness, that is a while.
We went over the house, it's going to have a hatch, no basement. I'm just summarizing this to make sure we covered everything, we're going to have white vinyl with black windows, it was an Azac trim. Windows are going to be double-hung windows with internal light divides, we have recessed porch. I also mentioned that I, I did mention this, but I think the architect did a good job because he put the bedrooms on South Gaston, so he doesn't have to deal with a clearance issue on the second means egress. So I had the construction code look at the plans and the consensus was, we don't think the house could be any smaller. I think it's a very efficient layout for what's there. I think the architect did a good job.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mike. We'll stipulate as amended on the record.
Very good, that's fine, that's, that's my customary condition, so that's fine.
Counselor, all set?
Yes, sir.
All right, need a motion to close the public portion?
Don't move.
Second? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Anything, guys?
I think it's a good idea. I think not everybody needs three and four bedrooms. I think there's probably a legitimate market for that. It's got to clean up that corner, which has been not cleaned up for many, many years. I just think it's a, it's a plus, and I do think that you read more and more about little houses, small houses, whatever to call them, and that's one of them. So it's, it's a plus.
I, I agree. It's a, like Rich says, it's a, it's a small house, but it's, I think what the planner said, it's a, it's a modest, modest type of housing that is, is accessible. I could see it as a starter home for somebody. I think it's, I think it's a great use of the space and, you know, I think it's a, I, I overall, I think it's a positive for the neighborhood and it fits in with the neighborhood as well.
It's going to be a hardship for me, because I do bring my car to Corbo's.
Will you drip any?
No, no, never oil it. But, um. But I think, I think, I agree with what everyone else is saying. It's a modest neighborhood, it's a home that fits within that neighborhood. I think it's a, otherwise, I don't know what else you could do with that empty lot, except park cars there, without seeking a variance or whatever. So I, I applaud the, the architect and the applicant, I think it's a, a good application.
Yeah, I, I was just going to say, I have a small modest house at the other end, at the other end of, at the other corner, Lozier and Fairview. So I think this is great. We need some smaller houses, this is wonderful.
All right, need a motion to move it?
I'll move it.
Second.
Real call?
Ed Allot?
Yes.
Roberta Carpenitz?
Yes.
Rich O'Neill?
Yes.
John Flores?
Yes.
Eric Alvarez?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll coordinate the preparation of the resolution with your office.
Thank you.
Do we have anything else before us? Do we have anything else?
No, I think we're all, you know, we, we took care of Bell Avenue and I think everything else on the, on the agenda, so we're next on on July 2.
July 2.
First Wednesday in July.
All righty.
Coming up quick. Um, I, I don't think Art gave me any comments, so. Motion for German somebody?
I'll move.
Second, all in favor?